Gentlemen, Woodbury, welcome to to my first in-person village board meeting of March 24th, 2022. I would like to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for Lenny Cologne. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so before we get started, I would like to take a moment to recognize the efforts of our Woodbury Community Ambulance. Recently, they had the distinct pleasure of delivering Woodbury's latest residents to, and I can't imagine the stress that you were under doing this, but I can't stress enough to people that are here, the importance of our volunteers. So on behalf of the village board, I would like to thank you and honor you by giving you a certificate of merit. So I wish it was more, but.
Yes.
No, you did? Oh, I purposely tried to get out of the way.
Sell, 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 sell.
Make sure the microphone's on.
Just, yeah.
Sure it's on.
It's not on. No. Is it on Jeffrey?
It's on the side here.
It's on? It's not? Oh, okay.
Does he hear me now? Do you hear me now? Yeah, I think you hear me now. Hi, for those of you, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Debbie Vobercheck, president of Woodbury Ambulance. And I'd just like to thank you guys very much for recognizing us. As you guys know, we are all volunteer. We have about forty members and every single one of them is a volunteer. It's extremely hard to, this is Jessica saying she's gonna be late. It's extremely hard to, to get volunteers and anybody that you know that you think might want to join us, we strongly encourage you to encourage them to do so because we need all the help that we can get. EMS all across the country, in the state of New York, county of Orange, is in major, major trouble, major trouble. And we are desperately hoping that we are not coming to a point, really in the whole country, where people are gonna call an ambulance and nobody's gonna come. You know, I don't think people realize the severity of the problem, but it is really, really bad. Good thing is things that we get to do, like this birth, I don't know if you really mentioned, you know, that's what this was. We delivered a baby at home and it was very thrilling because often we're dealing with sickness and death and it is absolutely wonderful and exciting to deal with, with life and happiness. And Jessica is just arriving. The night that we went, it was myself, Jessica, and Martin from Woodbury Ambulance and all three of us helped. We also had some help from Blooming Grove, the medic at Blooming Grove, and everybody really did it together. It wasn't really one person, but mostly the mother who did a fabulous job. But anyway, it was an exciting event and we, the three of us really, I think I could speak for all of us, we feel very fortunate to have become involved in something like this and have done it. And Jessica, like I said, has just arrived. They have a certificate for you.
So I also want to give a shout out to Woodbury PD. You had police officers house gone on scene and then you had Police Sergeant Eric Harden there as well?
Correct.
To assist. So there was more than enough hands on deck?
Yes.
For, for little Omari? Amari?
Amari. Amari, right?
Okay.
Yeah, he's adorable. We had them at their, at our last ambulance meeting and they actually came with the baby and we had a cake and it was very, very nice. So we got to share it with the rest of the crew. But anyway, thank you again very, very much.
No, thank you Debbie. We can't thank you enough for everything that each and every member of the Woodbury Community Ambulance does for, for us. So like I said, it's a small token of our appreciation. I had wanted to hand out trips to Hawaii, but I was outvoted by Desiree Padman.
Oh.
Well, that's why I ruled in the back.
Yeah.
Because I was afraid he was gonna hand out the trip to Hawaii.
Yeah. But no, I, I can't thank you enough. Like I said, it's, it's nice that this little moment, you know, it just bringing a life into this world because I understand you're probably dealing with sickness and death more often than not. And it's very rare that you get to bring.
Exactly.
So, thank you, thank you very much.
And thank you, thank you.
Yep, I'm gonna give Jessica her.
Debbie, you wanna take a picture? Or three?
You wanna all three?
Yes.
I'm the official village.
You're so good at it.
You get a stipend. Put in a voucher.
Per diem.
Gonna roll down the stairs. Well, he is here, so. That's right. Thank you.
Great job, guys. Great job.
Welcome back, Desiree Padman. All right, moving layer along, public comment on agenda items only. So at this point in the meeting, I, we give you the opportunity to speak on anything that is on tonight's agenda. So since there's not a lot of people here, if you have anything you want to say, you can go to the podium. If not, you don't need to. Don't, yeah, you're, you're good. You're gonna be on it already. So going once, going twice.
Three times.
Three times a lady. Sold. Alrighty, moving right along. All right, moving on to administrative business. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our March 10th meeting.
Motion.
Do I have a second? Who's the second?
Vic.
Vic. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty. Approval of abstract. Desiree, will you please read the abstract?
This is abstract number nineteen. It contains vouchers twenty-one, seventeen, ninety-nine through twenty-one, nineteen, twenty-three, and totals eight hundred thirty-five thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and forty cents.
All right, do I have a motion and a second to accept the abstract as read?
I'll make the motion.
CJ Graziano with the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Jesus Gomez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I need a motion and a second, moving right along, to authorize me to sign a two-year contract renewal, June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2024, with Mickey Phillips for the position of Water, Wastewater Administrator. So can I have a motion to accept?
I enthusiastically make that motion.
There you go. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Burek. All in favor? Any discussion actually?
Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you for staying.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
All right. Thank you, Mickey. Like in a, in a year, like the first three months where we've had floods and bridges out and water main breaks and everything else like that, this was the best news I've gotten so far. So with everything going on, Mickey, it's a pleasure to have you back. All right, re-levy of previously exempt properties. I need a motion and a second for the re-levy of previously exempt properties as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tara. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Furelli. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Fire department equipment requests. Desiree, will you please read the fire department equipment request?
Yes, there are quite a few this evening. Twenty-two dash oh six totaling approximately eight thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and one cents is for the purchasing of air bottle carry system, copper pipe water shut-off kit, a grip hoist to secure vehicles, and a security cage. Twenty-zero twenty-two oh seven was withdrawn by the fire chief because it was a duplicate. Twenty-two dash oh eight totaling approximately twenty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents is for the purchase of eight sets of bunker gear, helmets, and boots, which I believe is being paid for by the grant, right? Yep. Twenty-two dash oh nine totaling approximately eight thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars and ninety-five cents is for the purchase of industrial clothes washer and soap dispenser. Twenty-two dash ten totaling approximately three hundred forty-seven dollars is for the purchase of a mallet and leak control kit. Twenty-two dash eleven totaling approximately one thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars is for the purchase of seven bolt cut, bolt cutters of various sizes, a McLloyd tool, I don't know what that is, a hook head, and lights with mounts for helmets. And twenty-two dash twelve totaling approximately eight thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars is for purchase of thirty-five gallon pails of foam.
Is that all?
That is it for this meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's a mouthful and that's why she's here, ladies and gentlemen. Motion and a second to please approve the department, uh, fire department equipment request. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Chris, those will be all purchased before May 31st, right? All right.
Okay, moving right along. Can I please have a motion and a second to accept with regrets the resignation of Alex Presti from the position of Assistant Building Inspector effective March 25th, 2022?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Furelli. All, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so on behalf of the village board, we want to thank Alex for his service to our community and wish him all the best on his future endeavors. Okay, moving right along to old business. I have the acceptance of resignation from the Revitalization Committee. Can I please have a motion and a second to accept with regrets the resignation of Victoria Essick from the Revitalization Committee effective immediately?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Furelli, seconded by trustee Burek. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay, appointment to the Revitalization Committee. All right, so can I have a motion and a second to appoint Brady Del Vecchio to the Revitalization Committee?
I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. On behalf of the Village of Woodbury, we welcome Brady to the Village of Woodbury family, so. Okay, moving right along to old business. We have several decisions on moratorium waiver requests. So at this time, I will present the first one and ask a village clerk, Potvin, to read the Fogel sixty-two First Avenue resolution.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Woodbury Board of Trustees hereby determines the following. One, the failure to grant this waiver will cause the petitioner extraordinary hardship substantially unique to its property and circumstances, and such hardship is substantially greater than the hardship, including but not limited to financial hardship necessarily experienced by other applicants having their or its application decisions delayed. Specifically, Fogel's dwelling was destroyed by fire and he has been diligently trying to obtain the necessary approvals to construct a new, single-family dwelling with the same number of bedrooms when the moratorium was enacted. He and his family have now been displaced for almost three years. Two, the granting of this waiver will have no clear adverse effect upon the goals or objectives being now undertaken by the efforts of the Board of Trustees to protect and preserve the water resources of the village. The Board recognizes that the water usage calculations are based on the bedroom unit count of a dwelling and the proposed dwelling will have the same number of bedrooms as it did prior to being destroyed. Three, the applicant has sought this waiver for an action that is harmonious with neighboring uses and the community planning efforts currently underway, i.e. a single-family dwelling in a residential neighborhood. Four, the extraordinary hardship is not the result of any delay, action, or inaction by the applicant, the property owner, or any predecessors in interest, and that such alleged hardship has not been self-created. The need for this waiver is not based in whole or in part upon a lack of maintenance or repair of the property. Rather, the dwelling was destroyed by a fire displacing the family. Reconstructing the dwellings requires approvals from the Village Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals as it is legally pre-existing non-conforming parcel. Five, the impact of granting this waiver will not be outweighed by the benefits to the community in preserving the status quo pending completion of review of water resources. There will be no additional usage of water resources by permitting the construction of the swelling as Fogel is not increasing the number of bedrooms in the structure. Six, the relief being granted herein is not greater than the relief requested by Fogel in his petition and is not greater than the minimum amount of relief necessary to alleviate the extraordinary hardship found by the Board. Seven, the unnecessary or extraordinary hardship presented herein is not, A, a concern or objection that the present regulations may be changed by the village, or B, the delay necessarily incurred in making an application or waiting for dishes and on the application for averance, special permit, site plan, subdivision, or other permit during the period of a moratorium imposed by this local law. It is further resolved that based upon the above noted findings, the Fogel application is hereby exempt from compliance with Local Law Nine of 2021 and is thereby permitted to proceed to apply for and receive approvals from the Village Planning Board and permits from the Building Department to the extent they are otherwise entitled to the same.
Officially done?
I'm officially done with that one.
There you go. All right, do I have a motion and a second to approve the Fogel exemption as read, or the resolution as read?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
You came at the right time.
Are you Mr. Fogel? You were just approved.
You were just approved. Congratulations.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Oh, you went to, I'm sorry.
Well, you've been approved.
You've been approved.
Good luck, okay?
Good luck.
She wants to know the next step.
So I'll speak with the chairman and let him know that this has been approved.
That's the block.
Thank you, Brett.
You have to read all these?
Just, just now, because they're your findings, so you have to state them for the record. I, I'm going fast, I thought.
You are, but I just feel bad for you.
That's okay, I have a whole can of zero sugar A&amp;W root beer here. Oh, that's gonna help you.
Sugar rush.
Zero sugar.
Zero sugar.
Zero sugar.
All right.
Throat dry, oh, wet, whatever.
Moving right along to decision or moratorium waiver request for Woodbury Fresh. So village clerk Potvin, can you read the resolution for that?
These are shorter. Now therefore be it resolved that the Woodbury Board of Trustees hereby determines as follows. One, Woodbury Fresh, and specifically the two vacant retail spaces it intends to occupy in the Woodbury Center Mall, had in place a municipal water connection to the Village of Harriman prior to the enactment of Local Law Nine of 2021. Two, Woodbury Center provided proof of such connection to the Village of Harriman Water System, which was reviewed by the Building Department, Water Department, Village Clerk, and Village Engineer, which connection mitigates to an extent the demands of the Village Water System and its potential new water sources. Three, pursuant to the memorandum from H2M Architects and Engineers dated March 8th, 2022, the information provided is accurate. Four, although there is a possibility of a slight increase in the usage of water over the demand of the prior tenant space, the March 8th, 2022 memo indicates that it may be a modest increase of water demand from the Village of Harriman. There is no increase in the demand of water from the present Village of Woodbury Water System. Did you like the inflection I had there?
Yeah.
And it is further resolved that based upon the above noted findings, the Woodbury Fresh application is hereby exempt from compliance with Local Law Nine of 2021 and is thereby permitted to proceed to apply for and receive approvals from the Village Planning Board and permits from the Building Department to the extent that they are otherwise entitled to the same.
Thank you, clerk Potvin. All right, do I have a motion and a second to accept the decision as read on Woodbury Fresh?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. Finally, the last moratorium waiver request, the decision on Woodbury Shops. So inflections and all, give it to us.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Woodbury Board of Trustees hereby determines as follows. One, Woodbury Center, and specifically the vacant retail space to be occupied by the Woodbury Shops, had in place a municipal water connection to the Village of Harriman prior to the enactment of Local Law Nine of 2021. Two, Woodbury Center provided proof of such connection to the Village of Harriman Water System, which was reviewed by the Building Department, the Water Department, Village Clerk, and Village Engineer, which connection mitigates to an extent the demands on the Village Water System and its potential new sources of water. Three, pursuant to a memorandum from H2M Architects and Engineers dated March 8th, 2022, the information provided is accurate and there are no changes in use that may increase the usage of water. It is further resolved that based upon the above noted findings, the Woodbury Shops application is hereby exempt from compliance with Local Law Nine of 2021 and is thereby permitted to proceed to apply for and receive approvals from the Village Planning Board and permits from the Building Department to the extent that they are otherwise entitled to the same.
Great job.
Hey.
Who was the seventh in Monroe Woodbury Education System?
Class of ninety-two.
There you go. There you go. All right, do I have a motion and a second to approve the decision as read?
I'll make the.
Trustee Gomez with the motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Burek. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. Okay. Moving right along to more old business, acceptance of bids, award contract for Am Door Park Filter Replacement Project. Desiree, could you once again read the bid notice?
Certainly. The bid opening was held on March 18th and the public notice was printed in the time to hold record on February 25th. We received two bids, one from Tam Enterprises totaling two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, and the second from Aventus Construction Company totaling seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Correspondence has been received from the Village Engineers stating that both bids were deemed responsible and recommended awarding the contract to the apparent low bidder, Tam Enterprises. Attorney Norton has also reviewed the bid from Tam and has found it was legally sufficient to proceed.
There you go. All right, do I have now a motion and a second to award the bid for Am Door Park Water System Filter Replacement and Treatment Plant upgrades to Tam Enterprises at a cost of two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars?
Enthusiastic motion number two.
There you go. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Furelli. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I know he wasn't enthusiastic with a second.
I know he wasn't as enthusiastic as the second. Trustee Furelli. I have a conversation with him. Okay, new business. And you're up. Okay, request to erect lawn signs from, and you're gonna introduce yourself, Lorenzo. As per Village Code, Section 310-30G, prohibited signs, item six. No signs other than those placed by agencies of the government shall be erected on any public property unless consent is first obtained from the village board. So tonight, we have April here, April Lorenzo.
Lorenzo, correct.
Yep. Requesting permission to place two, two lawn signs, one on Dunderburg Road and one on Route 32 by the Woodbury Commons.
Well.
Is that correct?
It was more than one sign, but you've, along Route 32 and along Dunderburg, as well as one on my own private property.
Okay. To announce the opening of your daycare.
Correct.
The signs would be the size, the size of those that are used by realtors or when we run for office. And she had, you have permission from the property owners to place them on their property. So my first question to you is how many signs are you looking at right now?
One on mine and then four others, basically.
Four others, okay.
Yeah.
How long are you thinking of keeping these signs up for?
Not very long because it's basically just announcing my opening and more importantly, for enrollment for the September school year because I'm a little behind the eight ball. All other family daycares, preschools have pretty much already done their enrollment and have waiting lists. So, I mean, I don't know what the time period is allowed for a temporary, because obviously it'll be temporary.
Okay.
Because it's just, you know, to grand opening and enrollment.
Okay. So I'm gonna go out to the board now and see if anybody else has any questions, starting with at the end of the table, trustee Graziano.
I have no questions other than what does our code state for this?
Like I just said, she has to come in front of us to get approval.
No, so there is an approval process?
There is, there is approval. This is it.
Okay.
That's why she's here.
You said four on, is that on the private road?
So I have four, I have five altogether. One will be on my private property. I don't have private property for the other ones, so I don't know. My question is where on Route 32 would I be allowed to put them and where on Dunderburg? I know pretty much on Dunderburg, there's not a lot of houses. I want them more towards the school and I know across the street from Dunderburg, there's no, there's no homes because I really wanted to reach out to the school district to get enrollment, so.
So we're talking a total of five?
Five altogether and one of those would be on, be on my own private property.
So the other four are just up for grabs? They're not gonna be on private property?
Right, somewhere along 32 from here to the school and then on, on Dunderburg.
As long as they're on private property, I'm okay. I wouldn't be able, I wouldn't.
So private property is what? So like, would I be able to put them across the street from the school? If you have permission from the property.
Yeah.
But there's nobody, there's no homes there. But somebody would own the property though.
Yeah, they own it.
So I'd have to find out who owns the, yeah.
The village would only be able to grant you approval if it was on public property, meaning that it's property belonging to the village. So if you want to put it along those roads and somebody owns the property adjacent to the road, you'd have to get their approval.
If you, April, if you've ever seen the political signs out, where we would put our political signs?
Yeah, yeah.
We either get permission from the homeowner.
Right.
And have them out that way. The other way is we put them on the right-of-way, like Route 32, for example.
Right.
Or something like that, where we would put them out. But if there's a home there, we would have to get permission from the homeowner to put it out.
What if there is a business? Would I have to get?
Yeah.
So is there any area along Route 32 that I would not have to get permission? Not really.
Not really. No, because.
It's also a state road, it's not our road.
But the right-of-ways.
Political, political signs are exempt under the Constitution.
Yeah.
He would know.
But I'm trying to, yeah.
Do you get permission with the chief?
I can't think of anywhere on Route 32 that would be.
Owned by us.
Owned by us or would, you'd be able to over there?
Also, and Kelly or Mike, if they put it, she puts it on a business property, wouldn't that fall under a different zoning because it's business, not private? Yeah, so how, like, let's say on 32, there's Cosmos and like, so if I put it there, do I get permission from Cosmos or? Well, if they own the property.
They own the property, you'd have to get permission from that property owner, but I would also tell you to talk to the Building Department to find out what the Building Inspector building inspector would say is necessary for, or permitted for a size of that sign.
He said to come here.
Yes.
Oh, because he probably thought that it was for, on public property, and if it's on public property, then you would need to be here.
But private property is different. So basically, there's no public property, basically, on thirty-two or Dunderburg?
No.
No. What, Dunderburg anything, Rob? No, that's county, isn't it?
Every inch of every road is moved by someone.
By somebody.
Yeah.
But like, on Route thirty-two, I would just ask the business owner.
Right, like, can I just, because it's really, it's.
And say, hey, listen, this is what I wanna do.
Right, they'll probably say yes.
Especially if it's temporary.
Yeah, if you talk, let them know it's.
It's gonna be up for a couple weeks, and that's it.
Okay.
Go down to the blue building down the road from Bond Street, knock on their back road of the offices, I'm sure they would let you do it.
Bond Street is the big blue warehouse on there, and it's got all that open space there.
Yes, yeah, that's a good spot. It's on the left-hand side, well, depending on, if you're coming from Cosmos, it's on your right-hand side, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then on Dunderburg, so across the street from the high school, so we don't, no, there's no parking lot, like, on Dunderburg, right across the street, it's all like woods there, so how would I?
If you look real closely, there's a little driveway that goes up, there's two homes up there, they're private. So you gotta go in there and find out.
I've never seen a driveway there.
Yeah, there's a little one.
The main entrance going into like, the middle school on Dunderburg?
By the, little past the high school. After WP three's entrance, there's another little opening there, and that's, the other half is whoever owns WP three, that section of whatever property it is for that.
Okay.
That's a little harder.
Okay.
But that's on private.
Okay.
That's not us, that's the builders there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope they answered.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, listen.
You know.
Yep.
I do have a recommendation for you, though. The Memorial Day Parade, the committee puts out a brochure, and businesses take spots in it, and for advertising purposes, and it's distributed throughout the entire community. So maybe get a spot, get some, you know, buy a spot in the brochure, as a, first of all, you'll be sponsoring the veterans, which is a good thing, and then you'll also be advertising your business. It's the Memorial Day Parade Committee, if you stop down to my office at Town Hall tomorrow, I can give you a copy of one of the applications.
And also St. Patrick's has the.
The bulletin at St. Patrick's.
The same thing, advertisements, and then.
And that's pretty inexpensive.
Town Hall, I'm in both buildings, but tomorrow I'll be at Town Hall, yes.
Thank you so much.
You know, I have a question.
And I know you.
April, did you put any, did you put one sign up and drive by it to see if you can read it, go and by it thirty miles an hour? And make sure it's not too busy?
No, but I talked to, you know, the sign person, the establishment that I went to, and he said this would be perfect. I think it's pretty big. I didn't want it so much bigger, because I didn't know what the restrictions were going to be with regards to what you guys were gonna allow, but if anybody knows anything about amazing increases.
And I know you reached out to the Chamber, I know you reached out to the Chamber for a ribbon cutting, right?
Eleven.
A ribbon cutting from the Chamber of Commerce?
Ribbon, ribbon cutting.
The Woodbury, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow, too.
We are there.
I'll be there until eleven-thirty tomorrow.
Thank you, April. Okay.
Well, we gave her some good ideas.
There you go. They left happy.
They left happy.
There you go. Okay, moving right along. All right, so I need a motion and a second to authorize me to sign the renewal agreement with Millennium Strategies LLC for grant writing services for one year beginning March first, two thousand and twenty-two, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. So we're already past the.
Yes, we're already over there.
Okay. Let me note for the record, the total cost of this contract is three thousand a month, and the cost is now shared evenly with the town of Woodbury. I just wanna add, I just wanna add for the record what a benefit this has been so far to the Village and the taxpayers of Woodbury. To date, we have been awarded, awarded over two hundred thousand in grants, and have more, fingers crossed, in the hopper coming our way. So, can I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make that.
Motion, trustee Gomez.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Buick, any discussion?
Best idea I ever had.
Best idea Desiree Potvin ever had. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, I can give you my list of best ideas.
Good idea.
Yes, I'll give you mine.
Perfect.
Okay, so, moving right along to scheduling of, we have three public hearings to schedule. So recently, the Village received a moratorium waiver request for five Allegheny Cross to consider relief from Local Law Nine of two thousand and twenty-one. So I need a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing for May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, seven-thirty at Village Hall.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Yep, May twelfth. Do I have that motion?
To explain why May twelfth, because you guys all just said why?
The two of us.
The May, huh?
I made the motion.
Oh, okay.
What was it?
Did you get the second?
Do I have a second? Vic seconded.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, second, I have a moratorium waiver request, I need to schedule a public hearing for nineteen-seven Springs Road. So, can I get that motion in a second, please?
I'll make that motion.
And can I get a second?
Wasn't this an ARB more than it is?
I'll second.
Moratorium?
No.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it, okay. Can I please have a motion and a second to introduce Local Law Two of two thousand and twenty-two, which would amend section two-nine-eight of the Village Code entitled Water, to provide an amendment to the water rates? I have been advised by attorney Kelly Norton that there are no SECRE requirements for this local law, and is not considered an action under SECRE. Also, this law does not need to be referred to the County Planning Department or the Village of Woodbury Planning Board. So can I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on April nineteenth?
Do the introduction first.
Oh, would you like to go right ahead?
You did.
Oh, I did.
You asked for a motion second.
Okay, there you go, okay, so.
A motion and a second to introduce the law.
Introduce the law, and then I need to schedule the public hearing from there.
Enthusiastic motion number three.
Motion?
Second.
Second it?
Second.
Who made the motion?
CJ.
CJ.
Thank you.
Tara seconded.
Tara seconded, do I have any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now I need to schedule the public hearing. So I need a motion and a second to schedule the public hearing to be held on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven-thirty, to entertain public comment on an introductory Local Law Two of two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Gomez with the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Buick, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, last, under new business, so a petition to extend the consolidated sewer area for Highland Mills Center Group. A petition was received from Highland Mills Center Group LLC and Lakeside Affiliates LLC to extend sewer service to certain lands to be located in the senior housing overlay district in the Village. Pursuant to the Village Code, this petition needs to be referred to the Water Waste Water Administrator and the Village Engineer for review and comment. So can I please have a motion and a second to forward the petition to Water Waste Water Administrator Mickey Phillips and Village Engineer H two M for review and comment?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by trustee Graziano, seconded by trustee Furelli, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I would've gone out to the public for public comments, since all agenda items are done, but since inanimate objects that are still left here cannot speak.
I think this is proof of why virtual meetings work better than in-person meetings? I second that.
I, I, I'll third.
You have, you have no argument with me on that one.
Because there's nobody here.
There's nobody here. So at this time, I will go out to department comment, and I will start with Rob Wine. Nothing, sure. Mike Pinella?
No comments.
Mickey Phillips?
No comments.
Nothing?
It's all about Rob.
It's all about Rob.
I actually want to thank Desiree, but.
Wow.
And I'm still under legal obligation, for anybody who's watching at home, to comment on what a great job Rob Wine and the entire Highway Department is doing in the Village of Woodbury, so thank you.
I thought when the clocks changed, we stopped doing that.
No. Kelly, Kelly sent me an email today about it, I have to continue. And finally, well, not finally, Chief Burke.
Oh, I'll thank Desiree.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
No, I have.
Nothing. Village Clerk Potvin?
Just wanna say what an honor it has been to work with Alex, and I wish him the best in his future endeavors.
There you go. Okay, out to board comment, starting at the end of the table, trustee Graziano.
All right, I'll be, after last week, I'll be, last meeting, I'll be brief tonight, and just say, thank everybody who was here for coming, and everybody be safe and have a good night.
Thank you. Trustee Furelli?
I also wanna thank everybody that was here for attending. I also, I wanna thank the Woodbury Ambulance Corps for the extraordinary service that they provide for Woodbury. They do a tremendous job, and that's my comments for tonight.
But if you get Vic once again on the phone?
One more minute.
If it's an hour in your life, you will never get back.
Just one more minute.
Okay. Trustee Buick, just one more minute.
Thank you. I wanna start by thanking the Fire Department. I, I think, well, you had a busy week, I feel like, I know, you had a mutual aid today in Monroe with a house fire, and also we had a house fire, unfortunately, in Woodbury as well, and it's just, this is also the year anniversary of Jared Floyd's passing in the Spring Valley Department, which was incredibly tragic, and in my opinion, avoidable. But I, it just highlights, again, the dangers that these volunteers face every day, and, you know, Debbie from the ambulance corps was up here talking about the dire need we have in, in the country for volunteers for the ambulance, and it really is no different for the fire service, if not more dire because of the constraint, I mean, it's, there's so much that in the fire service you have to know, and the dedication, and, you know, everybody's so busy these days, and it's, it's difficult to find people that are that dedicated and passionate about community service and giving back.